Folks, if I could have your attention, I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting in order this morning, January 26th. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman. And before we get started, if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. And with that, a couple of announcements before we get started. The folks that are here for our second docketed item, which is PG 16-001, the South Oldham Fire Department Community Facility Review, that's going to be the second item on the docket, so it might be a little bit of time. We have a docket before that, so just wanted to make you aware, if you're here for that docket, you know, it'll be later on in the morning before, at the earliest, before we'll get to that one. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Ethel Fox back, is our Recording Secretary. She's going to be taking minutes here for us this morning and trying to keep me straight. So, Ethel, thank you, welcome back. And I also want to thank Deenia Crosby. She was Chair of our December meeting and did a fine job, from what I understand. Greg and I both had to be out of town, and so just want to thank you, Deenia, for taking care of the December meeting. Absolutely, absolutely. So, with that, yes, if you have cellphone with you, please turn it off or turn it on vibrate, because it will interfere with our cameras set up here in the courtroom. So, and with that, we'll now move into approval of our minutes from December 14th, and I think those have been mailed to everyone. If you all have had a chance to look over those, Chair would now entertain a motion to approve those, and then we'll go through if there's any changes. You have a motion to approve? Okay?
Mr. McWilliams moved.
Mr. McWilliams moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or changes to the minutes as mailed? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving our December 14th minutes signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. All right, those have been approved. All right, we'll now get our staff sworn in, if we could, before we get started with our first docket. Ms. Fox?
I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
With that, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would now read our first docketed item.
Docket PG 15-015, application has been filed by Central State's Tower III LLC and Cell Co. Partnership Doing Business As Verizon Wireless for approval to construct a 185-foot telecommunications tower on 35.672 acres located at the 2,500 block of West Highway 22 in unincorporated Oldham County, continued from August 2015.
All right, thank you. And before we get started on that, on this docketed item, this was tabled, so I would like to just read the relevant portion of the minutes from our August 25th meeting that said, "The applicant asks that the commission table this application today so that we can resolve an issue regarding the lease or easement of the property. They will send out a brand-new notice to everyone. They have waived the requirement that the application that was submitted on July 28th be decided on in 60 days. The new 60-day clock begins when the new notice is sent out to the planning and development staff, the commission, and the adjoining property owners. The notice will also be posted to the property, on the property, and put in the paper. The applicant will not submit a new application. It will be continued, and they will supplement the application with new information gathered." Tab F in our book that was given to us is being clarified in the postponement of this case. So at this time, as Chair, I would ask that, I would need a motion to remove docket PG 15-015 from the table for consideration. Need a motion to put it back on the table.
I'll move.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. McWilliams? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's non-debatable and non amendable and comes to immediate vote, we'll just do a voice vote, if that's okay. All those in favor of placing docket PG 15-015 back on the table signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. All right, the docket is continued. So at this time, I will ask Ms. Alvey if she will present the docket to the commission.
Sure. As Ms. Fox stated, again, Amy Alvey, for the record, Oldham County Planning Development Services, this application is a request for a cell tower at the 2,500 block of West Highway 22. Yeah, mic's on. Yeah. The property is Zoned R2 Residential, C1 Commercial, and CO1 Conservation. This is an overview of the, of the property that just shows the area, the actual total lot there is outlined in red. The gray squares there are structures, and then the hashed areas are driveways. This is an aerial view of the property as well. This is a zoomed-in of the existing zoning. You'll see everything here in yellow is R2. The areas in pink are C1 Commercial, and then the area here, and it goes on back into the depth of the lot, is CO1 Conservation. So that just gives you an idea of how it's got three different zoning classifications on the property. There's no previous site history on this, other than the continuation of the existing case. All documentation required by Division 340 antenna towers for telecommunications services has been provided by the applicant and is included in your packet, so everyone should have their binder from the previous meeting. At the previous public hearing on August 25th, 2015, there was a discussion between legal counsel for the applicant and the commission attorney, John Carter, regarding the easement versus lease status and the requirement of leased area to meet the minimum lot size of the zoning district, which was one acre. The original application was submitted on July 28, 2015. According to Section 340-040, the Planning Commission must advise the applicant in writing of its final decision within 60 days if the supplemental of the application or the application shall be deemed approved. The application was deferred at the August 25th hearing. The motion was as follows, Mr. Jeffries just read this, but it says, "Motion was made by Commissioner Horton and signed by Commissioner McWilliams to accept the proposal to waive the 60-day requirement that this commission must rule on the application for the cell tower for an additional 60 days from the date of notice sent by the applicant. The applicant submitted revised zoning drawings and surveys noting a 1.06-acre leased area and a revised lease agreement to the planning office on December 10. Notices were mailed to the adjoining property owners by the applicant via certified mail on December 10. And then the planning office was officially notified on December 17, 2015. Other requests to be on the January 26, 2016 agenda, making the 60-day ruling deadline February 15 of 2016. The applicants are proposing to construct a cell tower that would be 180 feet tall with a five-foot-tall lightning arrestor attached to the top for a total height of 185 feet. The plan also includes a concrete foundation and a shelter or cabinets to house radioelectronics equipment and other equipment. The applicant is proposing a 12-foot-wide gravel access drive within the leased area. The applicant is also proposing a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence with three rows of barbed wire atop for a total height of eight feet to secure the site. The landscaping is shown under Tab B, page P1 of the application. The applicant is proposing to plant evergreen trees 10 feet on center with continuous stone mulch. Mature height of the trees is a minimum of 20 feet. A vertical profile sketch of the proposed tower, which is under your Tab B, P6, shows lights midway up the tower, and also shows a tower beacon light at the top. The application does outline areas for future carriers to co-locate on the site plan, that's Tab B, P5, and antenna locations on the tower elevations, which is Tab B, P6. The applicant has prepared, submitted a geotechnical engineering report, which is Tab D, which indicates that two test boring samples were done. One boring location was near the proposed tower foundation and the other near the proposed equipment shelter. When a tower is taller than the distance from its base to the nearest property line, the applicant must furnish the commission with a certification from an engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that the tower will withstand winds of 70 miles per hour. The proposed tower is located 73.33 feet from the west property line. The certification is located behind Tab C of the application and states, "The proposed foundation plan is designed for a base wind speed of 90 miles per hour with no ice and 40 miles per hour with three-quarter-inch radial ice." We had addressed an issue with regarding scenic corridors, because Kentucky 22, from the Jefferson County line to the Henry County line, is considered a scenic corridor. So this gives you an overview of what the purpose of the scenic corridor is, to create the basis for visual character within and along certain primary arterial identified in the major thoroughfare plan, with particular emphasis on retaining the traditional cultural heritage of Oldham County. I'm not going to go through and read all of these, but this is where it talks about scenic corridors. And then it talks about prohibited uses. So these are the lists of the prohibited uses. The falling lane uses are prohibited from locating within 2,000 feet of a scenic corridor. And you can see there, adult entertainment establishments, fertilizer plants, handcuring operations, animal feeding operations, slaughterhouses, junkyards, dumps, and gravel pits. In relation to the comprehensive plan, Objective E2-6, E2-6, Item 5, it says, "New telecommunication towers should be located and designed to minimize impacts to existing trees and vegetation, as well as of visual and lane use impacts. Permit new telecommunication towers and utility substations provided that a more suitable site is not available, co-location is not feasible. The proposed facility is sited to minimize the visual impact on adjacent areas, and the vegetative screening, fencing, birmingham, and other measures are provided to minimize the view of the facility from the adjoining properties," or, I'm sorry, adjoining roads and properties. So this is where cell towers are discussed in our comprehensive plan, and they're also discussed in Objective B1-1-4. It says, "Oldham County will facilitate broadband infrastructure and telecommunication availability for residential, governmental, and business segments of the county." This is, I didn't go, these are the pictures from August. I didn't go out in the snow and take new pictures, so these are the pictures back from August. This is looking into the site. This is our county vehicle here, and then the proposed access easement runs parallel with that existing driveway. This is the black barn that is to be removed. Again, you can see the stretch through there that is marking the property line there from the adjoining property owner. And this just gives you a visual of where that black barn is on the overall site. This is the east view, looking back towards Ballersville area. This is the west view, going towards Presswood. This is the intersection of Centerfield Drive and West Highway 22. And again, this is looking back from the adjoining properties driveway back into Highway 22. This is the overall site plan, revised site plan that was submitted by the applicant. You'll see that they have put all of this area here into a leased space of 1.06 acres. This is just a little clearer version of the site plan. It gives the dimensions of the tower to the property lines. This is a detailed site plan of the actual site that shows the concrete pad, the fencing, This is the tower elevation that shows the overall height of the tower. And that is all that I have.
All right, Ms. Alvey, thank you. With that, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time? Yes, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm not sure if this is the point that, which I might ask this, and so I'll direct it to Ms. Alvey and to you. I'm wondering if somewhere early in the presentation here that either our Chair or Ms. Alvey or our counsel might kind of give us a review of how, how community facilities and how we have to look at it differ from regular planning and zoning issues. I think that, I mean, we're aware of it, but I'm not sure that everyone else is aware of that.
Horton, I don't think this is listed as a community facility review. I'll get Mr. Urban to...
Okay, so it, so it does not fall under the same conditions as a community facility review?
The next case is a community facility review. This one is a uniform application for a cell tower, and on the, let's see, it's the second page of your staff report, there's, should be highlighted in yellow, kind of the decision that you're being asked to make. You make a final decision to approve or disapprove the uniform application. If you decide that you disapprove, you have to give reasons why the disapproval, why you're disapproving it, and make suggestions which, in its opinion, better accomplish the objectives of the comprehensive plan and the locally adopted zoning regulations.
Okay.
So it's a, it's even more different than a community facility review or normal. You're, again, approving or disapproving the uniform application.
Good, thank you for differentiating it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any additional questions for staff? Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Was there a study done by our engineer, row engineer, with the entrance coming in and off of 22?
No, it doesn't meet the traffic thresholds for average daily trips.
Okay. It'll be, you know, mostly I would say that, you know, be a service truck going in, you know.
I knew that. I was just trying to get to the fact if this was, any information provided, what type of culvert road, gravel, what's going in there? I mean, because there's apparently another driveway right next to it, so what's coming next to that? So that's all I was asking.
And the applicant or their attorney can probably answer that in more detail.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Okay?
Well, let me just add, in relation to that, this is a state highway, and they're the ones that issue the encroachment permits for any kind of access.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Pike, I assume you will be leading us off here, and if you would, I'd like to get everyone that's going to speak from your side sworn in at this time.
Absolutely. If all our witnesses could stand and raise your hand.
And we'll get their names and addresses when they testify.
Sure.
Fox?
I do.
Pike, you have 50 minutes for your presentation, sir.
I'm going to hope to do it in a lot less than that, Mr. Chairman. Mercifully for everyone involved. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to appear before you again for the recorded record. My name is David Pike. I'm a principal with Pike Legal Group, PLLC, PO Box 369, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. I have a number of people with me here who are subject matter experts, who have prefiled reports that we'll adopt as their testimony later on. I'd like to kind of start by explaining what I propose to do with the consideration of the Chair, and, because I try to do these despite the fact that I'm a lawyer in a fashion which gets them done in an expedited basis, but also provides the information that you need to make a good decision. What I'm going to do is kind of, I'm going to review briefly all the filings that we've done and the voluminous expert reports that we've been submitting to your planning staff as an overview. Then I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about what our view of the law is in connection with this, because kind of, you know, one of the questions Mr. Horton asked, I think, is kind of prophetic, and of course, you'll want to rely on the advice of your legal counsel, but fundamentally, cell tower cases are very different from all other types of zoning cases in Kentucky. We have a very different type of statutory system here in this state, which is either innovative, weird, or certainly unique, depending on your value system and your point of view. One thing's for sure, it's different from any other state. And of course, also, we have a series of federal laws, which are dispositive in connection with cases like this, that do not come to bear in conventional zoning matters. So I'd like to spend a few minutes then talking about my view of those issues, because I, because I think that's important as an advocate. I think it's also important to highlight what, what the decision-making rules are from our perspective in connection with a case like this. I would be remiss if I did not begin by thanking Mr. Urban and Ms. Alvey for their very hard work in connection with this case. We've burned up the phone lines with them, and they've been most courteous in responding to our inquiries, because as your staff report indicates, no variances or waivers are required in connection with this case. That didn't happen by accident. It happened based on some very hard work that we put in over a long period of time with your staff to make certain that, to the maximum extent possible, we fully complied with all the provisions of your local regulations, as well as state law. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Carter for his input at our last meeting. It took us a few months to get it resolved, but I think we've now addressed his lease versus easement issue, hopefully to his satisfaction. We're grateful for that input, and hopefully that will save us additional issues on those questions today. As has already been noted, all of the exhibits required under Division 340 have been filed in connection with this case. All of your procedural guidelines have been met, and we filed proof of our compliance with all of those issues. We voluntarily waived confidentiality in connection with this case without having to be asked when we initially filed our application. And also, a copy of this presentation is available for distribution at this juncture, if you have no objections. We're distributing kind of a copy of my PowerPoint presentation and some proposed findings. First, let's kind of, I'd like to highlight a couple of provisions from your staff report that I think are particularly salient. First of all, your report finds that all the documentation required under Division 340 has been filed, so we've met all of your regulatory requirements in that regard. Also, it provides that the Planning Commission may deny a uniform application to construct a telecommunications tower only when it finds that the applicant was unwilling to attempt to co-locate additional transmitting or related equipment on any new or existing tower or other structures. It also states that the applicant provided a statement at Exhibit L that describes attempts to co-locate its antennas in the site selection process. Also, there are three conditions that are listed in the staff report. They're enumerated on this slide, and of course, included in the staff report. I'm authorized to indicate that if we're fortunate enough to receive your approval today, that we accept all three of those conditions and are prepared to be bound by them. A site plan is included at Exhibit B of the materials that we've tendered to you. A few highlights of those issues I'd like to cover. This is a 180-foot self-support tower with a five-foot lightning arrestor for a total aviation-related height of 185 feet. It's engineered as a four-carrier tower, but may be able to accommodate even more than that, since it's over-engineered, as I'll discuss shortly. No variances or waivers are requested or required, because it meets all setback requirements to the letter. And of course, your staff has indicated that it's in full compliance with Division 340. This is a large site parcel. We've cited it to comply with all of your local regulations. The technical setback requirement is 50 feet. We meet that even within our own lease area, in order to make absolutely certain that there could not be an objection voiced based on that issue. But we also managed to achieve excellent setbacks, including 400, over 492 feet to the nearest residential structure. Now, one point that was made by the staff early on, that I want to kind of take a little issue with, or perhaps I misunderstood Ms. Alvey's comments, this tower is not required to be lit under Federal Aviation Administration standards. Let me say that again, not required to be lit, and so we will not be lighting this tower. So in terms of community interface, whenever we can configure structures in a fashion so that they're short enough, so that that's not required, we do that, because in general, we think communities prefer it that way, and that's what we've been able to accomplish here. Radio frequency need is dealt with at Exhibit N, and a supplemental report, which we've tendered within the last week or two, that was filed in connection with the record. And of course, our radio frequency engineer is here today, if you have questions of him. Ultimately, what he, what he finds is that there is a significant capacity and coverage gap in our network in this vicinity. In order to meet that requirement, two things have to be accomplished. First, we have to locate a tower within a given search area that's plotted, and their tolerances on that are pretty limited, based on the fact that we have to make this fit within the existing wireless network, and, because if it's too close to an existing facility, it will interfere with it. If it's too far away, we can't fill the gap. So at the end of the day, our tolerances for where it has to be placed are pretty strict. Also, we have to deploy our antennas at a specified elevation. So from a radio frequency engineering perspective, both of those requirements have to be met. He also, of course, discusses a capacity gap in this area, since the use of wireless communications is growing exponentially in this country. It is all major wireless carriers can do to try to keep up with it, so that we are not blocking critical communications calls and links when they are most needed. Here's a plot of the current coverage in this vicinity. As you can see, and something I'll highlight in a moment, when we're discussing co-location alternatives, we are on all the nearby towers already, and have exhausted those potentials. And you can see in the, in the middle of this, there's a huge gap of service. Once this, once this facility is deployed, we fill that gap. And we have to be roughly equidistant from our existing facilities in order to make that work from a technology and a physics perspective. Radio frequency need is dealt with, again, at N and our supplemental report. We've worked hard to evaluate all possible solutions in alternate locations. We've modeled all nearby towers, and our radio frequency engineer, as well as the site acquisition report, explains that there are no other alternatives, period. We cannot move outside of the search area, and within the search area, there are no towers or other significant tall structures at all. But we went outside of the search But we went outside of the search area and modeled all the next towers that were closest. We were on all those towers. So at the end of the day, there are no available co-location alternatives, harkening back to the issue that was raised in your staff report, that that is the key decision-making criteria for you here today, is whether we've made the maximum effort to accomplish that. This is the search area for this proposed site. As you can see, it straddles the state highway. Ultimately, we have to be located within that area in order to fill the service gap and to provide the quality of service to our customers in this vicinity that they have every right to expect, and which we are legally obligated to provide under the terms of our FCC license. A site selection report is included at Exhibit L. It details our search for a suitable location within this vicinity. Of course, we begin with the idea that we always try to co-locate on existing towers and structures. And there's no magic associated with that. Ultimately, it is far less expensive than building a new tower, if we can do that. It prevents tower proliferation. It's encouraged by your ordinance. It's good planning. It's good business. And although it is a pleasure to appear before you tonight, today, I would not have to appear here if we were co-locating. That can be done as a matter of right, just with a building permit. So at the end of the day, if there was another alternative, we would certainly seize it. There are none. As documented here, we explain distances to other towers, which by the way, we are co-located on already. This is a map demonstrating some of those same factors, you know, where we are and where we're currently co-located. And as you can see, there are no tall structures in the vicinity, in the immediate vicinity which, on which we could possibly co-locate, so as to address the service problem. The applicants, ultimately, from a legal perspective and the statutory perspective, we are not required to rule out all other sites. What we are trying to do in this report is to make certain you understand that we conducted an extensive search, and we looked for all the alternatives, and what we found was an alternative that could be configured in a fashion which meets all your local regulatory requirements. This is a map showing all FCC-registered towers within a mile of our proposed area. In this instance, there are no towers or other suitable tall structures located within the search ring. There is a water tank approximately a half mile outside of the search area. We specifically modeled it. It's far too short, and it's outside of the search area, so it won't work, but we want you to know we didn't just consider towers, we looked at anything that was tall, and water tanks were included in that. The nearest existing tower is 2.75 miles outside of the search area. We've also filed a planning report prepared by Marshall Slagle, who's here with us today. Marshall, many of you may remember him from his prior service over 35 years with the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. He is one of only two or three fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, which he is fond of indicating is the rough equivalent of the Mount Rushmore of planning, except you don't have to die to be on it. He finds that this proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan, meets all your regulatory requirements, and recommends its approval. He also, of course, cites some of the same provisions that Ms. Alvey was shrewd enough to find in her presentation, indicating that your comprehensive plan also calls for the accelerated deployment of wireless communications infrastructure and other types of high-quality, high-tech equipment in your community. We also find that it's compatible with Highway 22, based on the existing stands of mature trees that are located in the area, and will be doing limited cutting of those in order to accomplish our objective, as you can see from our site plan, and of course, that the tower is proposed to be unlighted. At this juncture, based on Ms. Alvey bringing those issues up, I'd like to turn to another slide, if I could. Here we go. Also included in Marshall's report are some specific provisions dealing with scenic byways. I'm going to talk in a few minutes about some cases that I believe are binding on our deliberations from the U.S. Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals and the U.S. District Court from our area, because of course, the Federal Telecommunications Act governs what we're doing here today. Under those cases, aesthetic considerations do not constitute substantial evidence, and cannot be used as a basis for a turn-down of a cell tower case. Nonetheless, despite that, you know, that legal issue associated with consideration of the scenic byway question, this site is visually compatible with the protected area and compliant with the comp plan. At Page 50, you indicate that rural and agricultural appearance of traffic corridors should be maintained, and when possible, the placement of buildings behind features such as ridges, matureed stands of trees, and fence lines should be encouraged. Our proposed site is screened from 22 by existing stands of trees, which provide a visual buffer. Next, the proposed site will be unlighted, which is a key way in which we think we do a good job of making this more compatible with the surrounding area than might be the case otherwise. Also, the comp plan provides at Page 50 that increased building setbacks from scenic corridors should be encouraged. We fully comply with that, since we're 575 feet from Highway 22, an extensive setback that certainly would not be required associated with any other type of structure. And of course, consistent with federal law holding that aesthetic considerations do not constitute substantial evidence that would support denial, your specific list of prohibited uses that Ms. Alvey pulled out of the regs, which I'm very grateful for, did not include cell towers. And since you didn't include it, it certainly is not prohibited and can be viewed as compatible Property values are an interesting issue. I'm going to explain later why I think it's largely a tempest in a teapot legally, but since it's an issue that comes up, we always try to address it in presentations like this. We've tendered appraisal reports, an original one and a supplement from Marty Brown, who has over 20 years of professional appraisal experience. He's conducted extensive studies, including specific research on Oldham County examples that we filed in the record, and he finds that these have no adverse or negative influence on property values or on their rate of growth. Structural considerations, as a supplemental filing, are dealt with in a report prepared by William Grigsby, who's also here today. He's a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Kentucky with extensive experience with cell towers. Also, interestingly, he's the structural engineer who designed the building that we are standing in today. So if you have complaints on that, he's available to take them immediately after this hearing. This tower is built to all state and national specifications. It's built to withstand winds of at least 90 miles per hour. It is engineered well beyond normal requirements to what's referred to as a zero-foot fall zone, meaning that in the event that there was a catastrophic weather event of some sort, that the stress associated with that is relieved by the tower bending over as opposed to falling over. The result is that no portion of the tower should ever strike the ground. In a bit of engineering flourish, he also indicates that in the event of a direct strike by a massive tornado that might be enough to bend the tower over, quote, "it would be the last thing standing anyway, because everything else would have been destroyed." Blasting will not be used in the construction of the foundation of this facility. Drawings detailing the constructions are included at Exhibit C of our original application, stamped and sealed by the licensed engineer who will be responsible for design and deployment of the facility. It finds that, again, this is a zero-foot fall zone structure. Geotechnical report is included at Exhibit D, again, stamped and sealed by a Kentucky licensed engineer. It documents the soil borings that were done at this location in order for us to be able to do a professional foundation design and deploy a tower in conformance with it. Floodplain information is included incident to our survey. It, again, is stamped and sealed, in this case, by a licensed surveyor, and it finds that we are not located within a floodplain. Tower height issues. This is a tall structure, make no mistake about it, but let's put it in perspective as well, vis-à-vis other cell towers. This is a map showing all FCC-registered towers within a five-mile radius of this proposed site. There are 12 FCC-registered towers within that area. All 12 of them are taller than this proposed tower, all 12. Now, those are towers that were previously permitted and approved. The average height of the registered towers is 287 feet. That's over 100 feet taller than this tower. Now, of course, those towers are all lit. This one has been designed to be short enough so that that's not required. So this is a tall structure, but by cell tower standards, it's a short structure. Of course, we're in complete compliance with all of your local regulations, both notice and design standards. At the end of the day, we've met all the statutory requirements. We've also met all of your local requirements. And this is kind of a quick review of those, and the source of the compliance for each of them, but of course, your staff has already spoken to that, indicating that we meet all of your local requirements with no variances or waivers required. Now, what I'd like to do now is spend a few minutes talking about federal telecommunications law, if I could, because ultimately, this case is different from other cases, because we start with the idea that the first and the overreaching law that governs what we're doing here today is federal law. And that's a body of federal law which does not apply to other types of deliberations that you have to consider, but it is dispositive in connection with what we can and what we cannot do. Applications for construction of a telecommunications facility can be denied only when the denial is based on substantial evidence. That's directly from the federal code. Your own zoning requirements are an example of substantial evidence. So the fact that we have satisfied those requirements constitutes a key reason why, in our view, this application should be approved. Now, the following items are specifically not substantial evidence under Sixth Circuit case law, and this is direct from the federal courts, not from the state courts. Lay opinion is not substantial evidence. Unsupported opinion is not substantial evidence and cannot be used as a basis for a cell tower turn-down. Generalized expression of concerns with aesthetics is not substantial evidence and cannot be used as a basis for a cell tower turn-down. Claims that the tower is unsightly are generalized expressions of aesthetic concerns, because ultimately, the same objection could be raised anywhere by anyone. And as a result, federal case law takes that out of play regarding what can be used as a basis for substantial evidence. General concerns that the tower is ugly or unwanted near a person's residence are not substantial evidence and cannot be used as a basis for a cell tower turn-down, as noted in T-Mobile Central. Anyone who opposes a tower in their backyard could claim it would be bad for the community and not aesthetically pleasing or is otherwise objectionable. Federal law prohibits you from taking any action which has the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless service, and a prohibition of service under T-Mobile Central occurs when an application to construct a cell tower is denied even though the applicant proves that there is a gap in service, and we've made an inquiry into the feasibility of alternative facilities and locations, all of which, of course, we've done in aces and spades in connection with our case with expert testimony. And of course, a service gap exists when we present evidence of a gap in our own coverage, not gap for all companies, because our customers have a right to have their cell phones work first time, every time, when they need it most. Now, and of course, the Act also prohibits local governments from discriminating among functionally equivalent providers. Now, I suspect at some juncture, you'll want to turn to your legal counsel and ask for his thoughts on health effects-related issues. We've submitted a legal memorandum on that issue. I think this is well-settled law, both federally and from a state perspective, that issues involving health, environmental effects, and the like that are alleged associated with radiation cannot be considered by this commission. That's included in the U.S. Code. It's also picked up verbatim in KRS 100.986, because ultimately, that issue is entirely preempted by the Federal Communications Commission. Our obligation here today is to indicate that this tower will be constructed to meet all federal guidelines and operated in that fashion in compliance with our FCC license. We've done that in writing. I just did it orally, and from our perspective, that has to be the end of that inquiry in this proceeding. Property value legal issues. From a legal perspective, I want to try to put that issue, since I raised it earlier, since it's oftentimes an issue of public concern, I want to try to put it in a legal context at this juncture. Remember, non-supported objections over tower deployment ultimately cannot be used as a basis for a cell tower turn-down when faced with expert testimony. Regulation of tower placements, quote, "shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting." If the argument is used that allegedly this would decrease property values, let's assume that was the case for a moment, then the same objection could be made anywhere, effectively serving as a basis for a prohibition of service. So at the end of the day, it's our belief that that cannot be used as a basis for an adverse finding by the commission, even if it were the case, and we've submitted expert testimony indicating it's not the case. Also, of course, it's worth noting what KRS 10986-5/19 says. It doesn't say that property values are dispositive. What it says is, "We are required to consider those issues." And by filing these reports, we've indicated that we have, quote, "considered it." Now, ultimately, also, I think it's worth noting that these cases are different, although there's a specific statutory system set up for cell towers that we're obligated to follow here today, that these are utilities, and are licensed as utilities, and are specifically listed on the PSC website as utility providers. Now, that doesn't mean that we are exempt in the same way that a community facilities review, and I understand you're getting ready to do one of those, which is always fun, after this proceeding. They're not exempt, but we are different from other types of applicants in that regard, in that we're also regulated by the Kentucky Public Service Commission. There's a wealth of cases going all the way back to the Seminole, Oldham County versus Courier Communications Corporation. Now, of course, that case was under the former statutory system, but it does rightfully acknowledge that, you know, that we're a utility and are still listed on the website. If you need a printout of that, I've got copies to distribute if needed, if it becomes an issue. Now, some miscellaneous cleanup issues, because I'm getting close to the end of my presentation. First, we, of course, have 24/7 access to the site. That access is required so we can respond in the event of an emergency. In the general course of business, this is a very, very, very low-traffic generator, as was noted by your staff. The typical scenario, once this facility has been constructed, is once a month for each provider that's located for about a 30-minute maintenance visit. That's it. So a single-family home would be a massive traffic generator as compared with this. Also note that the site will not be lit under FAA requirements. The guidelines are not proposed and will not be deployed at this location, and of course, we've met all of your landscaping requirements. One of the reports that I tendered as a supplement that you should have before you, in connection with the next report I'm going to reference, helped to remind us why we are here today in connection with this application in very vivid terms. And I think it's important, before I conclude, that I talk about that. This FCC report that I've tendered to you, indicating that the most recent statistics indicate that about 70% of all emergency calls in this country are made from wireless phones now. 70%. That's happened in the blink of an eye, since, of course, I can now remember the first Star Trek episode, in our 50th year. Also, I can remember when cell phones was something that J.R. Ewing had in the back of his limousine. We've come a long way in a short period of time, and we have become intensely reliant on this type of technology. Now, hold that 70% requirement in mind for a moment. The next supplemental filing I tendered is the National Health Interview Study, which is prepared by a joint series of federal agencies each year, including the Centers for Disease Control and the National Institutes of Health. They study these issues intently, because they contact people for polling and other purposes via phone, and they want to make sure they're getting random samples. So they spend a lot of money researching the issues in order to get the most current and most representative data. More than two, more than two out of every five homes now in this country, 47.4% have only a wireless phone. No landline. Take a look at the statistics as of June 2015. 55.3% of all children live in households that only have a wireless phone. Now, put that together with that prior statistic, with 70% of all emergency calls being made from wireless phones. This is no longer a matter of convenience. It isn't quite It isn't a question of whether you get to update your Facebook page or not. This is communications now. And our mission at Verizon Wireless is to try to establish a network that will work in-building first time, every time. Will work when the lights are out, will work when nothing else is functioning, because it has to work. And it requires us to build robust systems that get appropriate levels of in-building coverage. We do not have that in this area now. If we are fortunate enough to receive your approval, we can deploy that network. Now, I've tendered some proposed findings of fact that were distributed to you today. You're obviously not obligated to use those, but it kind of recites a lot of the provisions that I've talked about in my presentation, and picks up a lot of the material from your own staff report. And, of course, indicates that we meet all federal and state requirements. I provided a copy of this presentation that's been distributed today. My witnesses, what I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, we can acknowledge that Gordon Snyder, who's our radio frequency engineer, who authored the reports that have been tendered, Marshall Slagel, who did our planning report, Marty Brown, our appraiser, and William Grigsby, our licensed engineer, are all here today, stood and took the oath. With your permission, what I'd like to do is to stipulate they are present, available for cross-examination, and that they adopt their reports as their testimony today, in lieu of having them stand up and present it in a question-and-answer format. We try to take great pains to make sure that everything was prefiled in that regard for public inspection. Also, I'd like to introduce all of our filings to date, original applications, amended applications, supplemental reports as exhibits. Also, I'd like to indicate that the supplemental materials I distributed today should be included as exhibits in this proceeding. And, of course, your staff report, which was obviously very favorable from our perspective, I'd like to adopt as an exhibit for the applicants. I've said it before, I'll say it again, we accept all three of the stipulations that are recommended by staff, if we get your approval today. This facility is in complete compliance with all federal, state, and local requirements, period. We've worked really, really hard to do that. Witness the fact that when we hit a bump in the road when we came before, instead of trying to proceed, we stopped, we addressed the issue at great time and expense, and now we're back after that issue has been addressed, in order to make certain that we meet not just the letter, but the spirit of all your requirements. We are also realistic enough to know these facilities are not popular. That doesn't alter the fact that they are needed and required in our evolving world of communications, in which we rely on this equipment for matters of quite literally life and death. If we can get your approval, we can dramatically improve the quality of service in this vicinity and address our critical service deficiency. I thank you for your attention today, and appreciate your consideration, and that's a good bit shy of 50.
I do appreciate that, Mr. Pike. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here to speak in support of, and your witnesses that are here, when we get to the questioning portion of the hearing, then, you know, if the commissioners have questions at that time, we'll call them up and proceed with those at that time.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before we start into the testimony and questioning by those opposing the application, I'd like to take about a 10-minute recess here and just ask the commissioners to, you know, not communicate with the folks that are here today outside of the hearing room, but we'll reconvene at 10:00 a.m. We are, take a little break here.